Good evening, I'd like to call the order of the Thousand Oaks City Council meeting for Tuesday, June 14th, 2011. Before I ask you to rise to say our Pledge of Allegiance, I'd like you to take a moment to acknowledge that today, June 14th, is Flag Day. A day in which we commemorate the date of 1777 when our Continental Congress officially made the Stars and Stripes the symbol of the United States of America. This day is a reminder for all of us of the symbol of the flag and what it represents, what it means to our country, and in particular, in a time of war, the men and women, both past and present, who have sacrificed, and in many cases, given the ultimate sacrifice for our freedom. So with that, I'd ask you to all stand and join me in pledging allegiance to our flag.
(Clerk) By the Pledge of Allegiance to the Lord of the United States of America, to be of all good, for which he comes, for whom he is, and for whom he has been.
Ms. Lawrence, could you call the roll for tonight's meeting place?
Councilmember Gillette.
Here.
Councilmember Bill De La Peña.
Here.
Councilmember Glancy.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Erwin.
Present.
Mayor Fox.
Here.
Item number four is request for continuance of any public hearing or agenda item, any request from the council. If there's no objection, I would like to manage the agenda a little bit this evening. The department reports 9A, B, and C, these are related to various lease agreements, will be taken up after the public hearing items 8A and 8B. That's the delinquent wastewater service charges and the Canale Mobile Home and Land Use Element. After those reports, we'll have the last public hearing, which will be the budget, and then we'll handle the remainder of the agenda. So that'll be the order if there's no objection. Item five is special presentations, so if you give me a moment, I'll go down to the podium. This evening, we have two special presentations, and I had the pleasure of recognizing two outstanding groups of young people. The first is the winner of the Canale Open Space Foundation Trail Education Day Essay Contest. Annually, we welcome several 5th grade students from around the school district who participated in the foundation's writing contest. This competition asks students to describe their experience when they had their Trail Education Day. I'd like to ask the foundation vice president Elaine Higgin to tell us about the program and introduce the winners to the community. Elaine?
Fox, thank you, thank you council members. This is the 20th year for Trails Education Days, which we consider a crash course in environmental and open space education. The program is sponsored by the Canale Open Space 8 Conservation Agency, and to date, in those 20 years, approximately 32,000 5th graders from the Canale Unified School District have attended the program. This year, 1,425 5th graders experienced a day in Wildwood Park, which includes a one-hour hike and three one-half hour workshops. Nearly 80 volunteers and agency staff members contributed over 600 hours of time and effort to make this a successful event. Details about Trails Education Days can be found at www.cosf.org, the Canale Open Space Foundation website. In the late 1990s, at the suggestion of Mayor Fox, I'd like to add, we instituted a writing contest as a follow-up for Trails Education Days. This serves several functions. First, it provides a lot of thank you letters for the dedicated staff and volunteers who make the program possible. Secondly, it lets us know how we're doing and what changes we might make to enhance the learning and clarify concepts that are introduced. And third, it provides teachers a platform for reviewing the Trails Education Day's experience with their classes. I'd like to introduce Julia Osborne Gorley, who's the president of the Canale Open Space Foundation, and she will introduce four of the five grand prize winners from the 2011 contest. Thank you.
Good evening, council members. The Canale Open Space Foundation is pleased to support Trails Education Days and the writing contests. Over the years, we've received over 10,000 letters. Each year, two letters are chosen, two letters are chosen as winners from each participating school, and there are five grand prize winners that are chosen district-wide. Cash prizes are awarded to all of the winners, as well as the grand prize winners' teachers. This year, we received 835 entries. You can read these grand prize entry winners at www.cosf.org. We had a panel of eight judges, including retired 5th grade teachers, who chose the five students as the grand prize winners. May I introduce to you our first winner, Rachel Kraft, from Lang Ranch Elementary School. Would you please step up? Our second grand prize winner is Kyle Osborne, from Lang Ranch Elementary School. And I might add, my grandson, so I'm very proud of him for that. The third is Genevieve Rista, from Madrona Elementary School. And our fourth grand prize winner is Chris Lockery, from Weathersfield Elementary School. All of these students work very hard, and if you read their letters, I think you will agree that they learned a great deal from this program. Thank you so much.
And again, we want to thank all the students who participated and the many, many volunteers that make Trail Education Day possible. Simply couldn't happen without them, and a number of them have been doing it for many, many, many years. So thanks very much for all you do. Our second presentation this evening, I'd like to ask Pat Grant to join me at the podium. Pat? The Canale Los Virginas Future Foundation is a local organization that works to foster projects and events that bring people of diverse interests together to foster understanding on quality of life issues and planning for the future. Each year, the foundation sponsors a youth congress leadership program. And we have with us tonight, Pat Grant, who's the Youth Congress Leadership Program Chair, who will tell us a little bit more about this outstanding program. Good evening, Pat.
Thank you.
Good to see you again.
Thank you, Mayor Fox and council members. I have been a trustee with the Future Foundation since 1993, and the Youth Congress Leadership Program is just one of the many things that they do. I brought a student along with me, and I'm going to ask him to tell you about the program. We had another student scheduled, and I don't know where she is, but she may come in halfway. But anyhow, we will proceed with our student from Thousand Oaks High School. But before I start that, I want to thank the council members for approving funding that in part helps pay for the Youth Congress Leadership Program by way of the community grants. We appreciate that funding that comes to us each year. And now, I'll just turn this over to our student.
Hello, members. My name is Sumed Shaw. A little technical difficulties. My name is Sumed Shaw, and I am a soon-to-be senior at Thousand Oaks High School, and this will be my second year with this program. The Youth Congress Leadership Program, sponsored by the Canale Los Virginas Future Foundation, is in its second year. It replaced Youth Congress Program that had run actually previous for 26 years. The objective of the Youth Congress Leadership Program is to help students learn more about their communities and encourage them to become active members in their society and find out how they can put input towards bettering their community. This year, the whopping 67 participants each had an opportunity to visit various regions in our local area to find out how they each contributed to our community. Students in grades nine through 12 were involved, including students from Agora, Calabasas, Oak Park, Lorena, Newberry Park, Thousand Oaks, and Westlake High Schools. Returning participants also have the opportunity to interview for leadership positions on the board. We began the year at Oak Park High School, were members of the Kiwanis Club from Thousand Oaks, the Rotary Club from Thousand Oaks, and the Seroptimist Club. Each all talked to us about volunteer opportunities. This was followed by a visit to the Kavli Theater at the Civic Arts Plaza, where Tom Mitz and Gary Mintz spoke to us about what it takes to put on an actual show. At the East Valley Sheriff's Station, Senior Deputy Jim De Soto and Sergeant Eric Hatley talked to us about how AIDS Police Department actually contributes positively to our society, and after that, we took a small tour of the facility. At the Los Virginas Municipal Water District, we were broken down into two groups, one group representing Northern California and the other group representing Southern California. After such, Jeff Ryan from the Water District and his team led us into discussions about how if whether the, if the South needed water, it would bargain with the North to get such water. This interaction was probably one of the most fun times we had. The visit to the community conscious under one roof provided us with other ideas and opportunities to volunteer in our community, with speakers representing Youth Employment Service, Interface, and Women's Resource Center. Jim Letterer and Jan Smith from the Greater Canale Chamber of Commerce spoke to us from the business standpoint and informed us about their tasks and how they promoted business in the region. Dr. Zimmering entertained us with an excellent explanation of what a school district is all about at the Los Virginas Unified School District. And our final meeting was at Los Robles Medical Center East Campus, where we were given a very good background on what it takes to actually run this hospital, and the volunteers, they took us on amazing tour of the facility. Each visit, each visit, speakers gave us excellent information about how they worked within a community to bring about results and make our community a very nice place to live. We wrapped up our program with a meeting at the Oak Canyon Community Park in Oak Park, where the Kiwanis Club of Thousand Oaks prepared an excellent barbecue dinner for us. It was very good, actually. And we thanked them, obviously. We would also like to thank all of the important community leaders that took the time to meet with us and helped make this program a very great success. Thank you so much.
produced by Thousand Oaks Television Station, TOTV, and the city's marketing staff. They did a great job of bringing a new look on how we showcase these upcoming theater performances, and I'd like to present a video for your review and for the community to see. It's an energetic video, gives you an idea of what we can look forward to in the coming year. So if TOTV would please roll the video.
Welcome to the show that brings you a sneak peek to all the excitement of live entertainment offered at the Thousand Oaks Civic Arts Plaza. Beginning this fall, the Theater League presents four major Broadway musicals of the last 25 years. Blue Man Group will thrill Thousand Oaks with its high-octane theatrical experience. Escape the ordinary and surround yourself in an explosion of comedy, music, and technology. The New York Times heralds the show as one of the most delightful performance pieces ever staged. E! Entertainment News exclaims, "Blue Man Group is what every live performance aspires One of Broadway's enduring classics, My Fair Lady, returns with all of the grandeur and romance that has made this musical one of Broadway's icons. Based on George Bernard Shaw's Pygmalion, with book, music, and lyrics by Lerner &amp; Low, My Fair Lady is triumphant, with songs like Wouldn't It Be Loverly, I Could Have Danced All Night, I've Grown Accustomed to Her Face, and Get Me to the Church on Time. You will be thrilled by this enduring classic. (Singing) Oh, tight, good pair of me, wouldn't it be lovely? (Singing) Oh, Mary, marry me in the morning, bring those presents of good joy. Feather and tomate, call out the army, but get me to the church. Get me to the church, oh, God, say, get me to the church. (Singing) I am with thee, begin to dance with me, and to the clouds come close. It's a Live, Young Frankenstein, the new musical comedy by Mel Brooks, is a wickedly inspired recreation of the Frankenstein legend. The story follows bright young Dr. Frankenstein as he attempts to complete his grandfather's masterwork and bring a dead body back to life. Frankenstein succeeds in creating a monster, but not without scary and hilarious complications.
I want you to do me a favor. I want you to rush over to the box office and get your tickets now. Tickets to what, you might ask? Tickets to one of the best musical comedies ever written. It's called Young Frankenstein. Make that Froggenstein. It would be a must if they could tell you how wonderful a show really is, so I won't say a word. But it is funny, and it's scary, and it's joyously musical. I don't know who wrote the music, but the guy's a genius. So rush over to the box office, now. Don't even wait to finish what you're watching now. Throw something on, anything, a slip, and rush down to the box office, get your tickets. If there happens to be a little old lady or a little old man in front of you, hurl them to the ground. Get your tickets. It's worth it. Live with it. It's good to be with you.
Celebrating 50 years of the Hollywood's famous Rat Pack, Sandy Hackett's Rat Pack Show has been hailed as the next best thing to seeing Frank, Dean, Joey, and Sammy themselves. Son of the world-class funny man Buddy Hackett, Sandy brings the best of the Rat Pack to the Civic Arts Plaza in a trip through time that will entertain audiences Vegas-style. (Singing) The magical touch of you, irresistible you, hug and kiss over you. Well, I'm with somebody, feeling that I will always be there for you. Look out, this Rat Pack is back. Two legendary Broadway performers come together to create a once-in-a-lifetime theatrical event. An Evening with Patty LaPone and Mandy Patinkin reunites these Tony Award-winning virtuosos and lifelong friends for the first time since Evita. Much more than a concert, this is a unique musical love story told entirely through a masterful selection of the greatest songs ever written for the stage. Funny, passionate, intimate, and utterly unforgettable, this is an evening no fan of musical theater or of two of the most acclaimed performers of our time can afford to miss. Purchase your tickets to all these fabulous shows, one at a time, or consider becoming a Theater League subscriber. Every subscriber will get free tickets to Cups in the intimate Shure Forum Theater this August. Cups is an entertaining comedy that traces the milestones in a woman's life through all the bras she's worn. Well, that wraps up our look at some exciting live Broadway entertainment opportunities, brought to you by the Theater League that you don't want to miss. I'm Jennifer Isaacs, and I hope to see you at the Thousand Oaks Civic Arts Plaza. Now, get your calendar ready, because show dates and times for all the great entertainment you have just seen is up next.
Thanks for that. Just a quick disclaimer, the city does not endorse knocking down elderly people to get your tickets. Our last presentation this evening is a, is an important one. And I'm going to let Mr. Mitnick talk about this, but in an era of government at all levels being scrutinized for its dealings with monies, the people's monies, its financial reporting, handling its budget, just a whole host of issues that deal with using the public's money. Tonight, we are recognizing our finance director and the city manager, the entire financial staff, for an award given for excellence in financial reporting. And this report is given by an independent panel, most specifically not just because of the accuracy, but because of the transparency and the full disclosure of what Thousand Oaks has practiced literally since the city's beginning in 1964. This is not the first award the city has been acknowledged with respect to its accounting and financial procedures. So with that, I'm going to introduce our city manager, Mr. Mitnick, and our finance director, John Adams. Scott?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, as the mayor indicated, we're going to share with you an award that just came in, in the mail. And it's a National Award for Financial Reporting from the Government Finance Officers of America. A lot of what the Finance Department does, it's not, it's not really sexy, you don't hear a lot about it. You'll hear about those cities or other local governments where they have financial problems. But there are a number of very dedicated and talented men and women in the Finance Department, and they, a lot of what they do is very challenging every single day. It's sort of a grind at times, but you're going to hear tonight later on the agenda is the proposed budget for the next two years. It'll be a public hearing, and you'll vote one way or another on the budget for the next two years. The budget is a spending plan going forward for the next two few, two years, and for the capital improvement program is for the next five to 10 years. But the Finance Department, in terms of dealing with our finances, the accounting, the budget, that type of thing, they're really doing four things at once. The budget's a spending plan for the year coming up. They're managing the day-to-day assets that we have, the quarter billion dollars of cash that they're managing, investing every day. And they're also, they're also doing the accounting for how do we spend the money for the year that ended. And the fourth thing they do is they do audits. They do internal audits of expenditures and programs from years ago. But tonight, we're going to recognize one of those four things that they do, and that's for their accounting and for the financial reports that they do. This is the 21st year in a row the city has received this award. And so we're taking it upon ourselves, it's been a few minutes, to just acknowledge John Adams, our finance director, and many of his staff are here, and many are not here. They're probably balancing the books right now. But this is a big deal, so only fitting, we just got this in the mail, we're going to present it to John on the same night that we do the budget. So John, congratulations, way to go.
I have a large presentation later, so I'm going to try to make this one short. For the Finance Department, this is a great honor. You know, the, to receive national recognition on our financial reporting is critical, and for a lot of us, it's a standard goal every year to achieve this award. But with that said, it would not be possible without the support and leadership of the city council. It is your expectations, it's your ability to provide us the support from a staffing level. I have, in my opinion, the most talented staff in the, in the state, very well-qualified. I have four CPAs on staff. It is amazing staff. They are fantastic, highly professional. The one I wanted to recognize tonight is my accounting manager, Catherine Haywood, who provides the leadership of that group. That group is a fantastic team. A lot of them are here tonight because they also work on the budget, and they are fantastic. So they really pull double duty. There's only two periods of time in a fiscal year that are busy. It's the first six months and the second six months. And that's really how I look at it. One is budget, and one is financial reporting. So again, thank you, city council, for your support. Thank you, Scott, for those kind words. I'm going to let the mayor say something about 21 years that we've received this, and that's under my leadership for the last couple of years, but someone else's leadership or a longer period of time.
Thanks, John. I think it's safe to say, she taught you everything you know. It is appropriate this evening, I was just chatting with our assistant city manager, who has an impending retirement, on when her last council meeting, council meeting would be, and she very humbly said, well, it's tonight. And so I think it's appropriate that on a night that we're receiving an award for financial reporting and auditing and disclosure, that we bring this hung up. Who was the finance director for many, many years, 21 years of service with the city of Thousand Oaks. Candy was certainly responsible for a great many of these awards and a great many budgets. She was preceded by Bob Berry, who was, I believe, one of our original finance directors. She was preceded by Bob Berry, who was, I believe, one of our original finance directors, goes way back, maybe Mr. Gillette could enlighten us on that a little bit. But we will miss Candy's leadership, her servant leaderships that she is known for, quiet, unassuming, yet a professional and not afraid to step in and do the day-to-day operations in running the city. When Scott was looking for assistant city manager, he certainly consulted with the council, and I could not give her a high enough recommendation for her stepping in. Even served as the interim city manager for a period of time when the city badly needed leadership. And so Candy has done a variety of jobs, and I just want the council and the community and the view of public to join us in thanking her for her 21 years of service. It is safe to say that Thousand Oaks would not be Thousand Oaks in part if it were not for her leadership and her service to the city. Candy, congratulations.
Of course, this is totally unexpected, I'm totally unprepared, but I, I want to say that I really have enjoyed the 20, almost 22 years that I've now worked at the city, and it's been a true pleasure to be at service. And I think that that's one of the things that we as employees enjoy about being city employees, is that we know we're doing well by our community while we're working here. And it brings no greater pleasure to me to know that I've made a difference. So thank you so much for your kind words.
All right, very nice. All right, we'll call item six, that's public comments. Madam Clerk, could you call public comments, please?
This is the time and place for public comments. The speaker card is available for those wishing to address the City Council regarding items on the agenda or on a subject within the city's jurisdiction. All speakers for public hearings shall be called and heard during the public hearing. Pursuant to council standards of operation, the mayor may assist any speaker from straying into areas not within the city's jurisdiction. All remarks should be addressed to the council as a whole. Under state law, issues discussed under public comments can have no action unless listed on the agenda and may be referred to the city manager for administrative action or scheduled on a subsequent agenda. All documents for city council and the official city record should be presented to the city clerk prior to speaking. And speakers are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. Two people have presented cards and pursuant to council standards, speakers are allowed three minutes. The yellow light displays when you have one minute remaining.
Thank you, Ms. Lawrence. Our two speaker cards this evening are Cindy Murray and Tula Colavos. Cindy Murray.
Hi, hi, Mr. Mayor, council members. I'm representing Cabrillo Music Theater, and I don't know how to follow Frank Sinatra, Mel Brooks, and the Blue Man Group, but I'm going to try. We don't have any dancers or performers here because we're in rehearsal for Sound of Music. But I came by simply to say on behalf of Cabrillo Music Theater that we appreciate your help. We have some pretty challenging times before us, and particularly because we have offices here. We just want to tell you that we're very proud to be the resident musical theater, and we'll do everything to continue as we have and make all of you proud of us. So that's all I want to say, and thank you for your time.
All right, thank you, Cindy.
You're welcome.
Tula Colavos. Tula, good evening.
How are you? I have some photographs that I wanted you all to see, but I never used this thing before, so how do I do it? A sandy town, also called a squatter settlement, is a slum settlement, sometimes illegal or unauthorized, of impoverished people who live in improvised dwellings made from scrap materials, often plywood, corrugated metal, and sheets of plastic. Sandy towns, which are usually built in the periphery of cities, often do not have proper sanitation, electricity, or telephone services. However, the observer Stuart Brand has also written more recently that squatter cities are green. Although sandy towns are less common in first-world countries, there are some cities that suffer from the sandy town condition. In the United States, some cities such as Newark or Auckland, and Auckland, suffer the creation of tent cities. Other settlements in developed countries that are comparable to sandy towns include Lo Class Banlieue in Paris, France, the Colonias in the border between the United States and Mexico, and other bidonvilles in France. So we add to the sandy towns of the world, Thousand Oaks. Would we like it to be? Take a look. I cannot help but think, I don't know how to do this and talk at the same time, but can you hear me? Look at these pictures, please. I took time to take them, all of them. Can you see them okay? It's kind of funny, though. That's how it is? Okay? These are six damages on the wall in Lynn Road. And although I understand 100% that Lynn Road, Lynn Ranch is under the auspices of the county, I think it's unexcusable. Under the excuse that Lynn Ranch area belongs to the county, the sandy town look is multiplying and reaching its ugly tentacles around us. Many of us see it but are helpless since our city is washing their hands and refuses to help. The damaged walls from car accidents have been left in a terrible condition for more than six months, and it seems there is no plan to fix them. We're obliged to live with them and endure the ugliness. I insist to hear from you what should be done. You must approach the county and oblige them to take care, either that or incorporate the delinquent area, and oblige them to uphold the responsibilities that we, the citizens of Thousand Oaks, adhere to with threats of being cited if we don't. This wall is a shame. It does not belong in our town, we're not the open fields or a garbage dump, and Lynn Ranch should clean their dirt and assume the responsibility of good neighbors. They must understand that their wall is a border to one of the most expensive cities in the United States, and they are not next to the open fields of a sandy town. We're proud of our town, we have tried very hard to keep it in a perfect condition, and no one should be given the right to destroy the project well-executed. I'd like to hear from you what you're planning to do. It's been more than six months, maybe a year. I see it every day, and I don't know if other people are bothered, but I am because I'm not about details.
Thank you, Ms. Colavos. That concludes our public comments. Move to item seven, that's the City and Redevelopment Agency Consent Calendar. Mr. Mitnick, do you have any follow-up on that?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the speaker did a good job summarizing the frustration the city and city staff have had with the county and with Lynn Ranch HOA over the years, if not decades. Many residents call, email, write, talk to council members, come into City Hall, and want to know why that wall, or portions of the wall along Lynn Road are in that condition. And there's two sets of walls for a considerable portion of that stretch. And it is up to each individual homeowner, actually, to fix the walls when they're damaged. And many of the residents don't do it because there's two sets of walls. The wall, their immediate backyard is fine, so they don't see the other wall that's damaged. And this is the downside of having these unincorporated islands, because we have no leverage. We can't do anything. But what we will do is, we will convey the concerns you've articulated tonight to the county and to the Lynn Ranch HOA, and we'll try again to have meetings with them. But what you said tonight conveyed the frustration that we have felt for many years, the downside of these unincorporated islands.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mitnick. We'll now move to item seven, that's the City and Redevelopment Agency. Mr. Gillette.
Thank you for your comments and bringing that to attention again, because if you remember, it was an initiative generated by the city several years ago that started the planting. And it was a hope that the creeping fig and what have you for the full duration from, well, primarily from Adonis down and south, and that that would in some way help buffer or, or cover up some of the, some of the blight, it ended, virtually ended, the graffiti and what have you, and all those things, turned into a beautiful space for a limited period of time. But now, even that hasn't helped. And we're right back where we were about 10 years ago, and it is unsightly, and I think all of us that drive it regularly recognize it. So it's, it's time, time for another, another initiative of some sort. So thank you very much for bringing it forward again.
All right, thank you. All right, now we'll move to item seven, that's the City and Redevelopment Agency Consent Calendar. Any items that council wants to call special? Ms. Irwin.
7E, 7H, 7L.
Let's build all the opinion.
Items 7M, O, and P.
All right, so that's E's in Edward, H, L, M, O, and P. Any other items? All right, who wants to move the balance of the consent calendar? Dr. Clancy.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to move the balance of the consent calendar.
All right, Dr. Clancy moves the balance of the consent, or discussion on that? Vote, please.
Motion carries 5-0.
That is approved. Ms. Irwin, item 7E.
Thank you. I had a question here about the First Amendment with Azteca Landscape. It's a pretty significant contract that we have with them on a yearly basis, and I know it's a three-year contract with two one-year extensions. Why did we decide to go to the extension instead of putting out an RFP after three years?
Yes, Councilmember Irwin, good question. The short answer is Azteca, in our view, gets an A grade. They've been doing an outstanding job maintaining our 27,000, or portions of our 27,000 street trees, 12 million square feet of landscaping that we maintain throughout the city. It's a team effort between our dedicated city staff as well as contractors. We also have other contractors on call that do work throughout the city, primarily tree trimming, but also other work. In 2008, when we did a extensive RFP, Request for Proposal, process, we ended up reviewing and interviewing a number of, a number of firms, I think 11 contractors actually submitted back then. And we started with a three-year contract, as you point out, and the contract allows for two one-year extensions. Because of their excellent service and performance to us, and the fact that they agreed to go forward with another year at, with no increases in any of the costs, we felt that this was the best value for the city, and would recommend that we exercise the first of the extension years. After that year, we can evaluate that again and decide if we want to go out at that time in the future, so.
Thank you, Mr. Spurgeon, I'll move 7E.
I, Ms. Irwin, move 7E, discussion? Vote, please.
Motion carries 5-0.
All right, 7H.
I guess this is another question for Mr. Spurgeon. This is about the traffic synchronization projects and how the scope looks like it's been expanded. This is actually one of the big things that I have residents asking me about, you know, what, what lights are synchronized and which ones aren't. So maybe just for the benefit of our residents, you can go into just a brief description of what areas we're synchronizing and what we've added to that and why.
Sure, my, my pleasure. You may know the city has about 129 traffic signals that we, we own and maintain. Currently, 71 of those are synchronized, so we have interconnects and we try to time those, especially during the peak hours, to keep traffic moving as efficiently as possible. And we've had an ongoing project when we received, especially grant funding, and we use some gas tax and developer fees to expand the synchronization of, of signals. This project was bid back in July of last year, and the engineer's estimate for it was about 875,000. The low bid came in at four, less than 400,000, so over half of, of our estimates. So we have quite a bit of capacity in terms of our, our approved funding to, to take advantage of this situation and, and add some additional synchronization. Essentially, what we're, what we have currently, Moore Park Road is, is synchronized for most of the way from the freeway up to Arbolas. Lynn Road and Olson is synchronized from about Flores all the way out to Sunset Hills. Thousand Oaks Boulevard, a large portion of it is synchronized. This project adds synchronization conduit and wiring to, to fill some of the gaps. So Thousand Oaks Boulevard, we're, we're adding a couple of stretches there, and Herb's Road, we're, we're doing some there. And Lynn Road, we're bringing Lynn Road from Flores all the way out to East Kelly, so south of the freeway. So Lynn Road will be synchronized just about the entire way. There's a number of other areas in town, and I probably don't want to go into that greater detail.
Thank you, Mr. Spurgeon, I'll move 7H.
Tommy, you got a question?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Spurgeon, just a question. If an emergency vehicle uses their interrupter, whatever you call it, to hold a light so that they can proceed through, how long does it take for that segment of synchronization to resynchronize?
Very good question. We have several locations where the fire department can preempt the signal timing. Moore Park Road, the, the station on, on Hillcrest just by the Oaks Mall can preempt in either direction. Also, this, the station up on Moore Park Road near the high school, Thousand Oaks High School, can preempt. We're actually working on the, the remote-type synchronization. We don't have that in place now, we've been talking to the fire department about that. Clearly, the need to provide for faster emergency response justifies these kinds of, of installations. But it does then disrupt the synchronization schedule, and it can take two or three cycles, several minutes before it kind of resets. And we get a lot of complaints sometimes during peak hours at these locations when people are, are just wondering what's going on, why isn't this, why isn't the signal changing? And it can be, a lot of times, the answer is, there's been a preempt, either the truck has already been through, or they, they go ahead and, and do the preempt, but then get called back right at the, as they leave the house. Sometimes that happens, so.
Thanks, appreciate it.
Ms. Irwin?
Move 7H.
All right, Ms. Irwin, move 7H, discussion on that? Vote, please.
Motion carries 5-0.
That is approved. I'm going to ask Mayor Pro Tem Irwin to handle the meeting. I need to step out of the chamber for about an hour, and I will return as soon as I can. So, Mayor Pro Tem, we're on item 7L.
Okay, for 7L, I guess that's Mrs. Spurgeon again. I, we've had a lot of questions on the Wendy interchange improvements, and now the Lowe's project is starting. Can you talk a little bit about the calendar? Is the Lowe's project going to, what, what is the timing between getting the, the expansion of Wendy and the Lowe's project being opened?
Yes, Mayor Pro Tem, the, the Lowe's project started rough grading some time ago, bit of a delay in revising their grading plan, but they should be back under construction fairly shortly. I believe that their schedule to open the store... I believe that their schedule to open the store is sometime next spring, summer, something like that. Wendy 101 Bridge Expansion Project, we are done with design. We're finalizing some of the permits with Caltrans. This will widen the bridge and increase the lanes in both directions, including bike lanes, and help with the congestion that's at that bridge that many of us experience, including myself twice a day. But we expect that the bidding will be done this fall and winter. Construction on the bridge project to start in January next year. That will take over a year, so there'll be an overlap. Lowe's should be done and open before the bridge construction is finished. That's just kind of how the way it is. We do have over $11 million of federal funding for the project, so funding is in place for that project so we can move forward as quickly as we can.
Thank you. Dr. Glancy?
Sure. It's your pleasure. I'll move seven H.
L.
L, I'm sorry.
Move seven L. Vote.
Motion carries four zero. Mayor Fox absent.
Ms. Bill De La Pena, seven M. Thank you. Seven M deals with the Thousand Oaks Boulevard Business Improvement District Management District Plan, First Amendment to the contract, and for housekeeping purposes, because I did vote against the formation of the district with the help of the city's voting property, weight property vote, I will not approve this one. So if someone else could move seven M, please.
Mr. Gillette?
Thank you. I'll move item seven M.
Vote, please.
The motion carries three one. Councilmember Bill De La Pena dissenting. Mayor Fox absent.
Item seven O. Ms. Bill De La Pena.
Thank you. Seven O and basically seven P, but perhaps we can do O and P together? The question, can we do seven O and P together?
I just, Mr. Gillette, did you say N?
No, I'm sorry. I must have gotten it wrong. I thought when we were going down, I thought N was also called out. Apparently, it wasn't.
It did sound like, when the mayor repeated it, it sounded like N, but he actually said and P.
Oh, and.
So that, but no N. Thank you.
Okay. So, yes, go ahead.
O and P together. I have questions about the overtime overnight and night differential being left out of that.
Toma and SMA don't have overtime or night differential. That's the general unit, and we are still working with them.
Okay. And then I am very grateful that an agreement was reached, but I do have concerns about paying out the accrued vacation and leave of absence, leave of absences. And I'd like this to be a precautionary vote. I do agree with the rest of the contract, but with the ability to cash out accrued and unused annual leave and vacation, I think it should be all used in one year. It shouldn't accrue and then be beneficial for retirement toward the end. I see that as a potential money problem down the road, and so that is not something that I approve of at this time, but the rest of the contract is fine.
Could I interject? The CalPERS system does not allow spiking with accrued leave. So when that is pulled out in the final year prior to retirement, that is not added onto your retirement base.
Okay. That's good to know. But the ability to cash out your vacation, however, that is something, I think vacation industry standard is that you use it or you lose it, and so that is something that I'd like to just mention on the record. Thank you.
Mr. Minnick, did you have a comment?
To remind council, we are part of CalPERS. As the HR Director stated, we're not a 1937 Act agency or in a different system such as the county or some of the other larger cities. So we're not able to spike the final year salary by adding vacation time and that type of thing. Also, the issue raised is subject to meet and confer, and so if there are any changes, we have to go through the negotiation process. So just reminding council.
Yeah, no, I'm fully aware of that. I'm just saying that this is a precautionary measure that I'm taking with the rest of the contract being okay. Nonetheless, I will still not approve it. So if someone else could move items O and P, I would appreciate it.
Dr. Glancy?
Yes, thank you. I'll move seven O and seven P.
Vote, please.
Motion carries three one. Councilmember Bill De La Pena dissenting. Mayor Fox absent.
Here we are on item eight A. And can I have the city clerk, please, open the hearing?
Hearing advertised as required by law is open to consider Agenda Item Eight A, the annual collection of delinquent wastewater service charges for the property tax roll. A speaker card is available for those wishing to address the city council regarding this public hearing, and we have no speaker cards.
Right, and it looks like the report's going to be done by Melissa Hurtado.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem and council. Melissa Hurtado, I'm the Revenue Assistant in the Finance Department. The report before you outlines the city's annual process to ensure payment on delinquent wastewater service accounts. This process begins in April with customer outreach and concludes with attaching a special assessment to the property owner's property tax bill. In April, when we began the process, there were 774 accounts subject to attachment. Today, the number is down to 240, or less than 1% of the total active service accounts, with an outstanding amount of approximately $63,000. There will be even fewer by the time the county actually attaches the tax rolls in early August, as customers continue to pay their delinquent bills. In all, the wastewater enterprise process has been very effective, resulting in an overall revenue collection rate of 99.6%, which helps to keep everyone's rates down. In order to move forward with the process, staff recommends council approve the list of property owners to be submitted to the county, along with a resolution to attach the property tax roll for the collection of their wastewater delinquent service charges. Staff is available for questions.
Questions of staff? Ms. Bill De La Pena.
I'm sorry, I missed the first two minutes of your presentation that you say how long they have been delinquent.
These are wastewater accounts that have been delinquent since December of last year.
Thank you.
Councilmember Gillette?
Do we have any comparative data on prior cycles? Is this particular, is this particular cycle we're going through anomalous, consistent, high, low? How does it fare, if you could go back a short distance?
Okay. Well, for example, this year, we're looking at $63,000 approximately. By the time we actually attach it, it will be a bit lower. Last year, we were looking at around the same amount, $63,000, going down to $56,000. In 2008, it was $48,000. So we have raised since the economic recession. However, it's been stabilized the last few years.
Okay. I think I was thinking more rather than figure, I think in numbers of customers.
Okay. Yes. Going back to 2008, we had 187, going up to 241 and 242.
Okay.
So right now, we're at 240. So we're consistent over the last few years.
Okay. All right. Fine. Thank you.
Okay. I will close the hearing. Council discussion. Ms. Bill De La Pena.
I would like to move staff recommendation.
Comments? Vote, please.
Motion carries four zero. Mayor Fox absent.
Ms. Hurtado, is this your first presentation?
It is. Thank you.
Very good job.
Thank you very much.
We are moving on to item eight B. Can the city clerk, please, open the hearing?
Hearing advertised as required by law is open to consider Agenda Item Eight B. Land use 2010-70131, a zone change 2011-70038. The applicant is 1200 Newberry LLC, Caneo Mobile Home Park, and it's located at 1200 Newberry Road. A speaker card is available for those wishing to address the city council regarding this public hearing, and all documents for city council and the official city records should be presented to the city clerk prior to speaking, and speakers are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. We have one speaker card for this item, which is the applicant, who will be allowed 15 minutes with a five-minute rebuttal.
And this evening, Mr. Spector is going to be doing the presentation. Good evening, Mr. Spector.
Good evening, members of the city council. This item happens to be a request to amend the land use element of the general plan and zoning for a site at 1200 Newberry Road, which is the site of Caneo Mobile Home Park. The request is to amend the land use element designation from mobile home exclusive and commercial to medium-density residential, which allows up to, actually, 4.5 or 4.6 to 15 dwelling units per acre. In addition, the request is to change the zoning from trailer park development and highway and arterial commercial to residential plan development up to 15 dwellings per net acre. This is a narrow view of the site. You can see the mobile homes on the property. And as far as the delineation of the different designations on the site, the northern portion is different than the southern portion. The northern portion along the Newberry Road is designated commercial on the general plan and C2 highway and arterial commercial in terms of the zoning. And this is where you have the entrance to the mobile home park and the tavern. This is a map that shows the general plan designation for the property. The crosshatched area is the property. You can see along Newberry Road, it's commercial, and south of that, it's mobile home exclusive. That southern 3.4 acres, as I said, is mobile home exclusive. The zoning's trailer park development, and that is the site encompassing the mobile home park. This shows the zoning for the property, C2 along the road and trailer park development to the south. As a matter of background, this mobile home park, I'm sure everyone recalls, is scheduled to close, was approved for closure some time ago, and the deadline, so to speak, for closure is June 30th of this year. We're very close to that time period. And as far as the status, at this time, half of the tenants have moved out, and the remainder have signed agreements, this is roughly half, the remainder have signed agreements to move out by the end of the month. And in accordance with the approved Closure Impact Report, all of the mobile homeowners will receive a payment in terms of relocation assistance. And then, as far as background pertaining to the general plan for this property and the zoning, when the original general plan for the city was adopted back in 1970, the site was designated for commercial. And then two changes actually occurred in 2008. The land use element was changed from commercial to high-density residential, which allows up to 30 dwellings per acre. And the city did that in order to encourage multiple-family housing. That was in January of that year. And then, in response to a mobile home initiative, a ballot initiative that was proposed, the property was designated mobile home exclusive and commercial in July. And that's how the property stands today in terms of the general plan. The zoning was not changed from what existed before, and that was C2 and trailer park Now, when we were evaluating the proposed change to the general plan for the site, the high-density residential designation and a similar or comparable zoning were considered. And the reason was that this high-density would help the city meet one of its obligations under housing element law to meet its regional share of housing need. Now, at the same time, the applicant did some analysis and determined that medium-density was the best designation. Medium-density is appropriate for townhomes as opposed to apartments, and he determined that high-density and multiple-family housing in terms of apartments, and in addition, commercial uses were infeasible. Now, when one looks at the benefits or the rationale for medium-density, staff believes that that's a reasonable use of the site because adjacent uses are residential, because there's already a sound wall to protect residential uses from freeway noise along the freeway, and it also contains mature trees and other landscaping, and that this townhouse, townhouse type of development would be compatible with the development to the south, which is also Another consideration in the review of this request had to do with Measure E. Measure E was adopted or was approved as a ballot initiative, citywide ballot initiative, back in 1996. And it provides that any change to the land use element that exceeds the citywide residential density or capacity or commercial acreage that was in place in 1996, November 6, 1996, must be approved by the voters. Now, complicating this analysis has to do with the fact that the mobile home exclusive designation for this property and other mobile home parks did not exist at the time that Measure E was adopted, because there's no density range to which to do a calculation. And this is the first general plan amendment involving a change from this mobile home exclusive designation. So in order to help us evaluate this request and any other requests that might occur in the future for a mobile home exclusive designation, staff is recommending that the council approve an interpretation when it comes to calculating the general plan capacity or the Measure E capacity, if you will, when it comes to changes to mobile home exclusive. And that is, we're suggesting that the city would actually retain or hold the residential density or commercial acres of each park that existed before it changed to mobile home exclusive and hold it in reserve. And then, at such time that that property is changed, a mobile home exclusive property is changed to another designation, that reserve residential density or commercial acreage would be available. And if, in fact, not all of that capacity or residential acreage is used at that time, it would result in a net Measure E credit. I know this is confusing, but bear with me, please. Now, this particular site, Caneo Mobile Home Park, was designated high-density residential before the change occurred to mobile home exclusive. And using that interpretation, we're suggesting the site would have a reserve capacity of 128 dwellings. Now, in this case, a change to medium-density residential would use half of that, 64 dwellings of capacity. The 128 minus 64, that was in reserve, minus 64 with this change, gives a net balance of 64 units of Measure E credit. Now, taking into account all the changes that have occurred to the general plans... Now, taking into account all the changes that have occurred to the general plans since 1996, the current credit balance for Measure E capacity is 123 units. So if the council sees fit to approve this amendment, then we would add that existing balance of 123 units to this additional 64 units based on the change from high-density to medium-density, as I described, and that leaves a total of 187 units. So as a result of this approach, the cumulative residential capacity of the general plan would not exceed the capacity that existed in 1996, and a Measure E vote would not be required. In fact, the cumulative capacity would be 187 units less than the capacity in 1996. There was a relatively simple environmental review that we completed for this property. We merely had to do an addendum to the mitigated negative declaration done for the prior change to high-density, and that was adopted for that project. And all that's done in accordance with a sequel, the California Environmental Quality Act. The Planning Commission heard this case back on April 11th of this year, and they recommended approval of the changes. However, they added a stipulation that no change to the general plan or zoning actually become effective, take place, until all the tenants in the mobile home park received the required relocation assistance payments. So with that, staff is recommending that the council and the Planning Commission are recommending that council approve the addendum to mitigated negative declaration number 257, adopt the resolution, proposed resolution, that would approve the general plan amendment with the condition that the approval should not become effective unless all tenants receive the required relocation payments. In addition, that the council introduce the proposed ordinance approving the change of zone, and finally, that the council approve the suggested interpretation of Measure E when it comes to changes to the mobile home exclusive land use element designation. So with this, I'd be happy to answer questions. Thank you.
Councilmember Bill DeLaPeña?
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Spector.
Good evening.
Did the Planning Commission hear the exact same presentation regarding the Measure E proposal and the analysis and the credits?
No.
They did not? Why not?
Well, we came up with, we thought it was appropriate to get that memorialized by the council, interpretation, and that idea that it was necessary came up after the Planning Commission hearing. And it's the purview of the council anyway, so we thought it would be appropriate to do that.
Yeah, we'll be hearing a lot about Measure E over the next three weeks, perhaps, two weeks, actually. So I'm wondering, we had already made a decision back in, what was it, 2005? I forget. About the year, the bank that we have. And now, why is it that you're asking for a, for lack of a better word, reinterpretation of the proposal tonight, if it was clear, at least, when we adopted the resolution back in about five years ago?
I believe the city attorney would be helpful in explaining that.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, members, or Madam Mayor Protem and members of the council, public and staff, I did want to jump in. First, I did want to say, the Planning Commission, it was in their staff report what the effects of Measure E was. And we did explain the bank part partially to them, and as Mr. Speck, so I don't want to leave it that we had no discussion of Measure E, because it was in the original staff report to them, but what I did want to explain is that he is correct, that this is a policy decision. The reason we're doing this, in 2005, when the council made their decision on the interpretation, it was very, very basic, which is, we looked at all the past, and just to sort of give background to people, all the past amendments that had taken place prior to, between 1996, 2005, we said, some of them, we don't, they shouldn't affect Measure E at all, they shouldn't go to the council, agreed. We said, specific ones where they truly changed from residential or commercial, and this is why, because it's in the spirit of Measure E and arguably really meets the letter of Measure E, council adopted that. At that time, we didn't have this change. The mobile home parks at that time were all under our general plan designations, and Caneo and Elms, somebody correct me if I have the wrong one, but I believe it's Elms, were commercial. Places like Vallecito, I believe, was medium-density, and so on. And we did a whole study for the council when we changed Caneo back in, I believe it was January of '08. And we came forward to council, we had a moratorium in place, part of that was to look at all of the land use designations for those, and we came forward, and we changed Caneo and Elms to high-density, and we talked about Measure E then. And we actually subtracted those units out of the Measure E bank. So, and that was in keeping with council's interpretation. When council adopted the initiative that was brought forward, it changed the land use designation for all the mobile home parks to mobile home park exclusive. There was no discussion of Measure E, there was nothing, how do we deal with that? So in essence, what we're saying now, and the reason you didn't consider this in 2005 is because this didn't happen in 2005, is that it makes sense to staff that all those numbers that existed for those mobile home parks, all those land use designations, we just keep them in the background. It's almost like a shadow land use thing designation, and we're going to keep the numbers and so that exactly this type of situation happens, that the mobile home park isn't penalized. Remember that to change their land use designation from mobile home park exclusive, they would have to go through a closure process, they would have to pay relocation expenses pursuant to our ordinance and under state law. It's a long, evolved process. So the Measure E part, in a way, just fro, from our perspective, is just freezing everything as it was and not using those. So we're not saying, take all those numbers that, from those parks, and put it into a bank. We're not saying that at all. We're just saying, they're there on the side for the mobile home parks, if and when anything else ever happens, it can come forward. We have no reason to believe that any of those are going to happen anytime soon. We haven't heard one single word about another park going through a closure process, but it really protects the parks, the property and the underlying designations, and a way for us to deal with it. So it's seeing that since we were really having to do this for the first time, and staff has been keeping track of the numbers, every time we have something come forward that has Measure E, we bring those numbers forward, we really felt it was important for council to just say, yes, we agree with your analysis and why you're doing it and what you're doing. I hope that answers it. I know I went into a lot of detail, but I felt that the background was important. Thank you.
No, I do like the details. Thank you. So we do have 187 dwelling units in the bank?
That would be the case after this case.
Okay, and 10 acres of commercial?
Yes.
Okay. And then, the other question is, your slide said that half had found relocation assistance, and the other half have said that they would be out by the end of the month?
Well, a half have already left, roughly, not exactly, yes, and the remainder have signed agreements to leave.
But we don't know where or how yet?
Well, we know a number of them, and I believe the applicant can speak to the status which changes daily.
Okay, then I will have a question for Mr. Bednar when he speaks. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Gillette?
Thank you, Madam Mayor Protem. I did want to ask Mr. Spector, it's here, but I just want to, if there is a need for any clarification, on your slide eight, which was the last question, the center comment, about half of the tenants have relocated, remainder, and I want to make sure that remainder is inclusive, that's everyone.
Okay, that's everyone.
That's everyone? Okay, that's fine. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right. We have Mr. Bednar. Mr. Bednar has 15 minutes. Good evening.
I reside in Agora Hills. I'm the managing member of 1200 Newberry LLC, the owners of Caneo Mobile Home Park. I'd say good evening, Councilmember Tom Glancy, Dennis Gillette, Claudia DeLaPeña, Scott Mitnick, Amy Albano, and Mayor Protem, Zach Aron. I'd like to start with saying that I agree with staff's recommendations, staff's recommendations that City Council approve addendum to mitigated negative declaration number 257, staff's recommendation that City Council adopt resolution approving LU 2010 7013 amendment to general plan land use element, the City Council approve ordinance approving zone change, the City Council approve staff's recommendation interpretation of Measure E. I'd also like to say that the relocation process at Caneo Mobile Home Park is in its final stages. It's an extremely busy month for me this month. I'm dealing with a lot of relocation, but I'm very happy with the counseling that I have on staff and my team. We're doing an amazing job getting everybody relocated. Currently, the attitude is very good out at the park, and we're getting a lot of activity, and people are moving. I'd also like to say that I definitely believe that medium-density townhouses are the best use for this property. I'm available to answer questions if there's any questions.
Any questions? Dr. Glancy?
Thank you, Madam Protem. Ms. Bednar, good evening.
Good evening.
I'm curious, what type of facilities are you using most to accomplish your relocation? Are they apartments, condos, other mobile homes?
There's a vast variety of new relocation housing that people are moving to. Some people have moved to alternate mobile homes, some have purchased condominiums, some have purchased homes, some are moving in with family members, some are renting apartments. There's some relocation programs for the city with many mansions. I lose the names, but there's some affordable housing options that are definitely there helping also. So there's quite an array of different avenues for people to relocate.
Well, it sounds like it's certainly across the board, whatever's available, you're making use of or they're making use of, bits and pieces of it. I'm curious, have you been able to get any placements into many mansion properties?
From what I understand, there's two or three people that are going to be placed within the next couple of weeks into the many mansion properties. I have a relocation specialist that's on top of all of this, definitely Miki Myers, and she's doing an amazing job, and she's holding everybody's hand right through the door, all the way to the end. And she's doing great, and she could answer your questions a lot more specifically, but definitely there are some, and from what I understand, they're moving in the next couple of weeks.
Thank you. You did quite well. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Councilmember Bill DeLaPeña?
Thank you. First of all, commercial, why did you, why do you believe that that property is not viable as a commercial site?
As a commercial site? I originally would have liked to have used the property as a commercial site, but with the changes in the economy and the surrounding neighborhood and all the research that I've done, I've come to the definite conclusion that commercial is not a viable option for that property. The best viable option is the medium-density townhouses.
And regarding those, do you mention that everybody has signed relocation agreements? What, do you know where those people are going that were advised by your assistant, the relocation counselor, to perhaps live in their cars or vans or buy an RV and park in parking lots until they find something more permanent? What is happening to them, do you know?
That's some kind of news. I haven't heard anything like that. You're the first one that's ever spoke those type of words to me, and I haven't heard of anything like that taking place. Everybody is relocating to alternate housing, and from what I understand, much better alternate housing, and I haven't heard any stories of what you're bringing tonight.
I had heard from the three people that were told that they could be living in, purchase an RV and then travel around and park in areas, so I heard it from them. I'm not sure whether that ever reached you. And regarding confirmation of payments, how will we receive from you confirmation that everybody has been paid and everybody has been satisfied so that this resolution before us tonight can actually be then come into fruition?
I'm sure that I'll be able to provide a very simple accounting that will be easily verifiable through staff, and if there were some residents that were unsatisfied with the relocation, I'm sure they would bring it to your attention, although I'm sure that we will provide a very simple accounting to take care of that situation.
Thank you. And can I add one thing to that? Thank you, Madam Mayor Protem and members of the council, staff, members of the public, Mr. Bednar. The relocation expert is also giving almost daily updates to our housing staff so that we're staying on top of what is going on and also be able to, at the end, see that checks were written out to people, the contracts were done, that everybody was paid. We have absolutely no indication at this point that that isn't happening, and as people have moved, that they have received their money. In fact, I just want to say this because I think it's important, Mr. Bednar has gone out of his way and has actually advanced money to ensure that people are getting into housing pending them moving out and then receiving the end of their relocation night. He has, his relocation expert has worked very, very diligently, and I think he should be commended in the sense for the amount of work and the understanding and his willingness to continue to assist everyone that is out there to find, as he said, alternative housing in most, in many cases, really, really, very nice alternative housing. So I just wanted you to know that that has happened, and he has worked very closely with his relocation expert to make that a possibility for a lot of people.
Thank you very much.
I just had one question. You've touched on it already. We, you know, I personally would like to see housing there that would help us meet our RENA numbers, something that would serve the lower-income portion of our community. Did you, you seriously consider that, and that just doesn't pencil out?
I definitely took a very serious look at it. I even entertained some offers to sell the property to specialty companies that are professionals at that, and they came and did their research, and all came back to me, and it was unviable for them. So it helped me to make my decision to go towards the medium-density townhouses, which I strongly believe are the best use for the property.
All right. Thank you very much. Anybody, oh, Councilmember Bill DeLaPeña?
Thank you. Is Miki Myers here tonight?
No, she didn't come tonight.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, and...
Thank you.
Do we have any staff responses or any further questions of staff?
Yeah, I'd just like to emphasize that the, the recommendation, both of the planning commission and staff, is that these actions are contingent upon all those payments being made and, uh, places the obligation on me, uh, as a representative of the city to verify that, and we will bring that information to council once it's been done.
Okay, I, I did have, I just wanted to verify once more with the action that we had before turning this property from, um, it was, uh, commercial to high-density and then the whole methodology you want to use for the, the kind of shadow banking. We're not increasing our, um, residential capacity according to measure E at all, correct?
That's correct.
Thank you. Anything else? All right, so I, um, Mr. Bednar, you have five minutes rebuttal. We'll skip that. Uh, uh, I'm going to close the public hearing and entertain council discussion. Dr. Glancy?
Uh, thank you, Madam Pro Tem. Um, at this time, I think, uh, let's just go ahead and, and move staff recommendation along with the emphasis on the stipulation. It's been a long time coming, it's been a long drawn-out, uh, process, and I think that it's been handled about as well as it, uh, it can be. As relating to, uh, some statements from someone about what conditions are, I think there've been several occasions where, um, statements that aren't very easy to verify have occurred, so, uh, I think everything's going to proceed on the up and up and, uh, we'll be able to verify payment and the process will be served.
Any comments on the motion? Vote, please.
The motion carries four zero with Mayor Fox absent, and just want to read the ordinance title, approving zone change for approximately four point two eight acres on South Side Newberry Road east of Ventu Park Road, Z 2011 dash seven zero zero three eight.
Okay, we're going to move on to department reports, um, item nine A, and this will be a report presented by the city manager, Scott Mittnick.
Madam Mayor Pro Tem, members of the council, let me go to that. Nine B, uh, the following three items are lease agreements for office space here at City Hall. The first one is item nine A, and this is a proposed, um, actually a lease agreement amendment between the city and the New West Symphony. The New West Symphony, and we have representatives from the symphony here, the New West Symphony is the community's resident symphony, and they've been here from the beginning of the Civic Arts Plaza, and, uh, as we've shared with council before, we have been in negotiations with the symphony for quite some time on the office, uh, space rent. And the, um, and they lease out one thousand three hundred and twenty square feet on the second level in the Civic Arts Plaza. The proposal before council is, uh, and council has agreed to this before, is to not charge, uh, off, a rent for the office space to help the symphony balance i- its budget. So, uh, in doing so, we, we have to do the formal, um, housekeeping paperwork, and that's what's before you, uh, tonight. So we're recommending that, technically, they owe us, um, rent going back, I think, to two thousand and six or seven, whatever that timeframe is, and we're recommending waiving that. We do not show it as a revenue in the budget, uh, so it's, um, it's not going to have an impact that way. And in addition, the symphony also, uh, owes some theater credits for rental of the theaters, and we're recommending that those be waived as well. Then going forward, the lease will be for a dollar a month, and it'll be an annual lease with extensions possible each year through the year twenty sixteen, and then we'll take a look at it, uh, at that time to see if the, uh, the council is, and the symphony are interested in, in continuing that. So it's been a long haul to get here. We're taking a couple of minutes to talk about it. It was a recommendation of the arts consultant in the report that was done a few years ago. The symphony is having a hard time, um, uh, last several years. This last season was a highly successful season. They, um, balanced their budget, and a dollar a year, I don't know what I said before, but the, the rent would be a dollar a year. Um, well, I lost my train of thought, but they had a successful season, not just in terms of the quality of the performances, but they brought in a little bit more money than they spent on the operating side. They do have some debt, including this, and this would help them. This would help ensure that they stay here, they're headquartered here, and that they have, that they're viable and they have a, a good future going forward. Staff is available for questions, as are representatives of the symphony. Thank you.
Questions? Dr. Glancy?
Uh, thank you, Madam Pro Tem. I, I'd like to just make a comment about the, uh, symphony and, um, how it brings to our community a level of the arts that we really haven't, uh, enjoyed, um, in previous day. And based on the, uh, the programs that I've attended, the quality is really quite, quite good, and I think that if we need to, uh, support some of what, um, really supports our community, I think we need to do it. So I would move the staff recommendation.
Comments to the motion? Vote, please.
Mayor Pro Tem, uh, wait, do you have a speaker?
Oh. I am sorry about that. Jennifer Zoblean? I'm sorry that I missed your card.
That's all right, thank you. Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem and members of the council and the city manager and the city attorney. My name is Jennifer Zoblean, and I do reside in Thousand Oaks, and I'm speaking as president of the New West Symphony, but I'm also speaking on behalf of our board of directors, our staff, our musicians, our donors, and hundreds of volunteers who have supported the symphony for sixteen years. And all of us have devoted our time and energy and financial resources to New West Symphony because we believe in its value to the community. The New West Symphony not only makes beautiful music that enriches our culture, it bolsters the economy, and it provides music education for thousands of school students. It is the only professional symphony orchestra in the region, and as Scott mentioned, it is one of the three resident companies at the Civic Arts Plaza. In spite of these challenging times, the New West Symphony has improved its financial position during the last year through judicious budget cuts and prudent management. However, running a professional symphony orchestra is expensive, and we want you to know that receiving significant help from the city and perhaps from the Alliance for the Arts would have a direct impact on our success. So we appreciate your thoughtful consideration of this recommendation, which if approved, would greatly benefit both New West Symphony and the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have a question? Oh, Councilmember Bill De La Peña? Council, um, comment on the motion?
Yes, thank you. I wanted to congratulate the New West Symphony on, um, improving its financial situation and also for the work that you do for the area's youth with your music programs. It's vitally important, and you put that wonderfully on display during one of your fundraisers a couple of weeks ago, and it is obvious that there is a great interest in local arts and music, and I hope from this day forward that, uh, it can only become better. So good luck with everything and congratulations again. And now we'll support the motion.
Vote, please.
Motion carries four zero, Mayor Fox absent.
Moving on to department report nine B, this too will be presented by, uh, city manager, Scott Mittnick.
Madam Mayor Pro Tem, members of the council, the New West Symphony is the resident symphony of, of the community. Cabrillo is the resident civic light opera, and they also have office space here at City Hall, albeit smaller, uh, eight hundred and seventy square feet on the second floor, right down the hallway from the New West Symphony, which is also located near the Alliance for the Arts. And the office space agreement that we have right now, it's very similar to the terms with the symphony. We had an oversight and that we forgot to deal with the issue of utilities. So over the last few months, uh, or, or maybe it's a period of a year, I'm not, I can't remember, but the, um, Cabrillo has accumulated about two thousand nine hundred dollars' worth of utilities and other reimbursable expenses. So it's, uh, staff's recommendation that we forgive that and revise or amend the agreement so going forward, the, um, Cabrillo will not be obligated to, to pay those, that, that the city will take care of that. Again, this is to show support for the, uh, resident civic light, uh, opera. Cabrillo too is having financial challenges. It's a, it's a tough time to be in the arts business right now, and this is a small way the city in compliance with the, uh, recommendations from the arts consultant, uh, and so on, uh, and the, the council, um, arts committee has been working on this for a long time. This would help toward that. So that's staff's recommendation. Thank you.
Councilmember Bill De La Peña?
The arts are really realistically always in need of subsidy, and I was wondering with Cabrillo Music Theater and the oversight, is this something that, um, may occur in the future, or will we, how much will we continue to subsidize Cabrillo, for example? I'm not a good, I'm not questioning the subsidy, I'm just, uh, wondering how much.
Uh, Madam, uh, Mayor Pro Tem, members of the council, that's actually an excellent question. In an ideal world, the arts would thrive, all the seats would be full, um, and the resident companies would pay us full market rent and pay all the utilities, and they would have very generous benefactors out there making up the difference, because even when they sell a receipt, it's still not enough to balance the budget. So in an ideal world, we wouldn't have to do this, but in this country, what we found, this has been a learning experience for us over the last several years. Council, recall, we hired consultants, and our model here is extremely unusual in which there's no subsidy. It's unheard of in Europe, and in the United States, for cities of our size, a hundred and thirty thousand residents with this type of facility to expect no subsidy, it was an eye-opener for us, so. And this is a very minor subsidy for both the symphony, Cabrillo, and, and in general. If you look at our neighbors in Oxnard and in other cities, um, they provide a heck of a lot more. So we'll look at it every year. If we can get to the point where we don't have to do it, I'll be the first to put it on the agenda, so. Hope that helps. Thank you.
As long as we budgeted for it, but I'm sure we will have that question answered in our next session here, the budget session. All right. Um, have we, do we have a motion on that? I'll move approval.
Comments to the motion? Vote, please.
Motion carries four zero.
Department report nine C, and that will again be presented by our city manager.
Madam Mayor Pro Tem, members of the council, this is the final office lease item on the agenda, and this is pretty very small office space, um, actually like a, sort of a large closet, a hundred and twenty square feet located just out in the lobby here, and, um, the American Red Cross was, uh, using that space, and they have vacated that space. The, um, Regional Art Museum group, who are trying to raise funds to build, um, a sizable, um, I forget the square footage, uh, twenty thousand square feet, perhaps bigger, uh, art museum here in, in the downtown area, they've asked if they could use that space as their base, as they show potential donors around and so on. So it makes sense to us, it would be a, uh, a dollar a year, and similar terms, it would be for one year, and then extend, put potential extensions through the year twenty sixteen. So for all three of these leases, we'll come back to each year, uh, to extend it. Uh, so again, we're not using the space now, it makes sense, and with that, staff's available for questions. Thank you.
And I have a comment card on item nine C. This is Margaret, uh... Yes, that's what it is. Please state your name and city of residence for the record. Good evening.
Mayor Pro Tem and council members, I'm Margaret Feewigger, and I'm a member of the board of the Regional Art Museum. Mr. Michael Yeath, uh, is also a board member. Our chairperson would ordinarily be here, but he is enjoying a summer life on a lake in Wisconsin, Mr. Frank Shillo. We are very grateful to you for the opportunity to have an office here. Let me just bring you up to date on what we've accomplished so far. We're a task force of twenty-eight members. We have a membership of one hundred ninety-seven, I'm sure by the end of the week it'll be two hundred, and we plan to double that with our charter members by the end of the year. We've completed a feasibility study about donors. We're in the middle of creating a detailed strategic plan. We've put together an advisory group, and at this point, we are, uh, working on the development of a capital campaign cabinet. We are so grateful to you for the consideration of having an office, not only because the price is right, but also because we view it as a strong symbolic support of the city to be located here. So in advance, um, thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. Ms. Bill De La Peña?
I have a question again. Do we, not, not for you, uh, just for the city manager, thank you. Do, um, Mr. Mittnick, do we, were there any other interested parties or applicants who wanted to take advantage of this closet?
Madam Mayor, or Madam Mayor Pro Tem, members of council, the short answer is no. Um, it, no, and, um, I hope that answers it.
Okay, um, I'm, I'm just wondering, I know that there are other arts groups out there in the community that are looking for space, and, uh, this may not be the most attractive space due to its small size, but I thought I'd ask the question to see whether there are interested parties. So if you're the only one who has applied officially, then okay, thank you.
Dr. Glancy?
Uh, thank you, Madam Pro Tem. I think that, uh, in response to Ms. Bill De La Peña's comment, um, probably other organizations found this space inadequate for them. I'll move staff recommendation.
Motion? Did you just make a motion? Okay. I, the city manager was making a comment to me. All right, comments to the motion? Vote, please.
Councilmember Gillette? Did you vote? Vote. Motion carries four zero.
All right. Thank you, and we, um, the next item that we have coming up is, um, our, uh, public hearing, item eight C, but we are going to take a break for a closed session, so if we can have the city attorney Albano, please announce it.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Pro Tem, members of the council, members of the public. Um, council will be going into closed session for a conference with real property negotiators, parcel located at southeast corner of three ten Kelly Road and eighteen seventy-two Newberry Road, Thousand Oaks. Agency negotiators, negotiators are the city manager and the city attorney. Negotiating parties for the Canejo Valley Unified School District, who's the owner, is Dr. Jeffrey Barstedt, Dr. Joel Kirchstein, seen under negotiation, price and terms pursuant to Government Code, section fifty-four, nine fifty-six point eight. And if we need to report anything out, we will after we return. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. All right, we're back from recess. We'll reconvene our council meeting for June 14, 2011, and we'll move to item 8C, public hearing item. Madam Clerk, could you call item 8C, please?
Hearing advertised as required by law is open to consider. 8C, proposed fiscal year 2011-12 and fiscal year 2012-13, city and redevelopment agency operating and capital improvement program budgets. A speaker card is available for those wishing to address the city council regarding this public hearing. At this time, we have no public comment cards.
All right, just a housekeeping item. Ms. Albano, do you have anything to report out after the closed session?
There is nothing that needs to be reported out. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, Mr. Adams, good evening. I have been waiting for weeks.
Good evening, Mayor Fox, city council, and I've been waiting for six months, so I've been waiting a little bit longer. Let me quickly go to our agenda, and I'm gonna have, you know, a few dozen slides. I will try to go through them as fast as possible. If you have questions, please stop me, and I can answer any questions. At the end, staff will be available for any questions. Quickly, just the budget process overview. We're gonna talk about the operating budget. We did have a study session last month. I'm not gonna repeat that study session. Some of the items that are proposed, a good example may be in the police contract budget. I'm not gonna discuss those tonight. If you have concerns that need to be highlighted, please let me know. Capital budget, I'm gonna provide you the changes since the study session in April. It was clearly outlined in the report, but we're gonna provide you a high-level summary. If you have questions, please ask me at that time as well. And then I'm gonna talk just briefly about future challenges, and then tonight, council will have discussion and adoption of the next two-year budget. Budget process, couple things I wanna make comments on, 100% compliance with the fiscal policies. What's really critical is general fund is structurally balanced, operating revenues matching operating expenditures. This is two one-year budgets. City council and staff have reviewed. Finance audit committee has reviewed the budget twice, and the capital facilities committee reviewed the capital budget as well. And then, of course, this budget is only a two-year budget. We do have future challenges. As we update our financial strategic plan based on this budget, we will identify future challenges, which I'll talk about tonight, but we do have challenges that are outside of this two-year period. Quickly, this is just the budget lifecycle. We really start the needs assessment. You know, the needs assessment includes the community attitude survey and other needs assessments as far as core services, policy strategy, development, really city council priorities, that's what we're talking about. Next slide, operating, the budget development staff, not just finance staff, but all staff in the city, all departments spend a lot of time preparing and analyzing their budgets, as far as the CIP as well. Adoption, tonight you will be adopting the budget for the next two-year period. And then implementation, July 1st, the first-year budget will go into effect, and we'll be operating in a new fiscal year. Monitoring feedback, this has been critical over the last several years with the changing of the economy and the declines in revenues. Finance staff monitors, we prepare monthly financial reports. Hopefully, we'll bring you an update at mid-year, which will be next February. We'll provide you feedback at that point as well. Here's just a quick timeline since the start of the fiscal year on the budget development. Let me talk very briefly on the operating, or not briefly on the operating budget, but I wanna highlight briefly the changes since the study session on the operating budget, really just in two areas, very minor in the general fund, modifying a few revenues, making some other changes in the general fund. The net effect is $93,000. Budget is still balanced, structurally balanced in the general fund. Theater fund, I think we discussed this at the capital, at the capital or the operating study session. One of the recommendations at that point was to have the general fund provide support to the theaters to provide funding for their capital budget or for their capital improvements in the next two years. Council, in that discussion, gave direction to allow for that support from the general fund. It is one-time expenditures. At the end of the two-year period, we'll reevaluate that. Capital facilities committee also met, recommends the funding from the general fund for the theater projects. Operating summary, quickly, 203 million point one, 203 million in the first year. That is all funds, both operating and capital. Second year is 186 million. The decline is mostly in capital. We have a larger capital budget in the first year than the second year. When broken out by categories, you can see at this point salary and benefits are a little over 47 million, represent 23%. Capital budget is 45 million, another 23%. Maintenance and operation is the largest component, 65 million, at 32%. In the second year, you can see capital has declined down to 27 million, and I'll cover this later in the capital budget portion of this presentation. Salary and benefits remain pretty consistent with the prior year, maintenance and operations as well. Just wanna cover staffing really quick. We've talked about this before. This city has, based on challenges, revenues have reduced staffing. We've done it in various ways. This just gives you the example over the last, since '03-'04, staff at that point was 597 people. That is, including police. Based on this budget, you're at 515, and that includes police department as well. Here's the five-year history, just for the general fund, non-public safety. Here is the position history across the board. This shows you the 597 and the 515, 482, non-police, down to 407. That's 75 plus the additional in police over the five-year period. And then this is just showing you where the positions or the way that we've reduced positions for non-police personnel. So in summary, again, $203 million in total sources, 203 million in uses. We do use reserves at 32 million. As you can tell, capital is over 45. In compliance with the financial policies, capital is funded from reserves. In the second year, 186 million in uses and sources. We spent a few minutes on general fund, library fund. On the general fund, major revenues, these are assumptions. We've talked about this at the last study session. I always think it's important to reemphasize what portion of the sales tax is our budget and how and what our growth assumptions are for the next two years. Total revenue, 64.6 million. Sales tax, the number one revenue, of course. Here are revenues from top to bottom, 1 through 10, sales tax being the top. Now, these 10 revenue sources represent over 95% of total revenues in the general fund. Here's the breakout, just in a pie and a nice picture. Sales tax, 38%. Second one is VLF, or intergovernmental. And then you have charges for services, and property tax is your third, 11%. Second year, very similar, sales tax again, 38%, VLF is your second largest, and property tax, 11%. When we saw you in February at the council goal setting, we present you with a forecast at that point for 11-12. At that time, we had a projected $1.8 million gap between revenues and expenditures. In order to get to that point where we are recommending a balanced, structurally balanced budget, we really looked at various areas, both salary and benefits, as you know. We're holding those flat. Police contract costs, we did not have the projected 5% increase in this budget, it's only 3%. That's based on some changes in the police budget. And then maintenance and operations, we had some reductions in there. But overall, we looked at all three areas, had changes in those in order to balance the budget. General fund operating expenditures, 64.5 million. Salary and benefits is your largest component at 44. Police contract costs are 39%. Again, salary and benefits, 43%. Police and contract, 41. There is an increase in expenditures up to 65.9. So here's the comparisons from prior year, which was 9-10, 10-11, is our projected, and then 11-12 and 12-13. Certainly, you can see the increase in capital at least currently, but for 11-12 and 12-13, the first year is a little bit higher because of the capital. General fund operating summary, this is how we're showing you that we are structurally balanced. I showed you total expenditures, which were higher than total operating revenues, but then we back out one-time expenditures like capital and some maintenance improvements, and that's how we get to a balanced budget, ultimately zero. So one of the things that we did over the last few years, short-term gap strategies, reducing certain costs, these are the list of those costs. Those are being restored because those short-term strategies are not needed at this point. We have sort of conformed to the new normal staffing-wise, service delivery-wise as well. Briefly on the library fund, here's their total revenues. Total library-directed revenues, just a little over $6 million in the first year. Their total revenues for the full fiscal years, 8.2 million. Please note the 1.565 million in operating transfer in from the general fund. I will show you another graph that will show you that the next two years are the lowest level that we have supported the library from the general fund over the last 10 years. Here's the expenditures for that same period of time. Again, balanced, the general fund does make up the difference between their designated revenues and their expenditures. You know, we've reduced staff. The library has been hit by a reduction of 20 positions. In this slide, you, go back, go... You can see salary and benefits that were at '09-10 at 40, 4.3 million. In the proposed budget, 3.7 million. And so that just reflects the reduction in staff. I hopefully that's clear, that salary and benefits have reduced over 600,000 from last year in the proposed budget. One too many. Recently, the county, there was a longstanding agreement for the library. That money is being transferred to the, that money from property tax from the unincorporated areas are not coming to the city's library fund. That impact was $332,000. We talked about this a little at the study session, recommendations of 197,000 have been made and are implemented in this budget. There were other recommendations that are not being recommended at this point in time. This is the slide I was telling you about. If you look at the last two bars specifically in red, those are the lowest levels as far as general fund support over the past 10 years. And as library revenues have grown slightly related to property tax, they have been able to reduce expenditures based on salary and benefits, and so the general fund support has been lowered. And that's because the general fund has had revenue declines of over $11 million over the last three years. Enterprise funds, I'm gonna briefly go through the theaters fund. I did provide a lot of this at the study session. We didn't talk in depth about it, but I thought it was important to bring up again. This simply just shows you the red line, the expenditures. The blue line is the revenues. And over the last couple of years, there has been a gap between expenditures and revenues. It will increase next year. There is no question that revenues have not, we don't expect revenues to turn around, but there are expenses that we're gonna make to try to improve the advertising and marketing and the programming at the theaters. The green line is the fund balance or the reserves, I shouldn't say fund balance, the reserves that the theater has. That green line shows it declining. And this was the projection if the general fund does not provide support for their capital projects. This graph, I think, shows a lot. This shows you how attendance and performances have declined, you know, over the last few years and hit really what we consider bottom, hopefully. Part of us putting more money into advertising, promotions, programming, is that we hope to return attendance and performances over a five-year period to what they had been traditionally at. Again, this is, I wouldn't say an aggressive plan, it is a five-year plan in order to help the theater hopefully turn around. We'll monitor this over the next couple of years, see how the theater is performing and reevaluate at that point. Just for everyone's benefit, the theater fund, this is their revenue, 35% of their revenue is based on labor sales. I mean, we charge for the staff that works here in the theaters and help supports the various performances that go on. The second-year budget, 4.1 million, again, salary, or labor sales is a large portion. Theaters, salary and benefits represent about a half of their expenses, 1.9 million. And in the second year, expenses go down. In the first year, we really are spending a lot of money in marketing and advertising. The expenses go down in the second year. Just challenges, decline in performances. I've shown you the graph that shows decline in performances and attendance. Current fees, one of the challenges that we have is full cost recovery versus what market rate is. That's a challenge for the theater fund. Deferred maintenance, because of the challenges, maintenance and capital improvements have been deferred. Capital facilities committee certainly recognize that. Capital facilities committee believes that in order to have a successful turnaround for the theater, that the general fund should be putting in money for improvements in the theater. That's what staff's recommendation is tonight, and with the capital facilities support, or committee's support, that's what we're recommending. Opportunities, again, just, you know, having the additional expenditures there, doing the capital improvements. We have to have a five-year plan, hopefully, to improve the theater and turnaround performances and attendance. Golf course fund, just briefly, a little over $5 million, very consistent, have a management agreement with golf course. Currently is struggling a little, but has been relatively successful over the last few years during the economic decline. Transportation fund, just about $4 million. The increase in the first year is related to capital. Solid waste fund, 1.4 million. Runs our solid waste programs, our green programs and stuff. Water operating and capital funds generated from water sales, that's a major component, is the purchase of water. Those financial plans for both water and wastewater will be returning to the city council, I believe, in the fall. I believe, in the fall. Other fund highlights, we have a few other special revenue funds, stormwater. Costs in stormwater fund have increased. General fund has provided some additional support, but there's some new revenues or increases in revenues in that fund. Capital projects fund, this is really our developer fee funds. Developer fees have declined. Our expenditures are projected to be six-point-four million and three-point-one. Again, mostly related to capital, so it's front-loaded on the first year. Redevelopment agency, based at least today, redevelopment agencies are still alive. We are planning for that in the future. We are budgeting Statsco for the redevelopment agency at this point. Proposed CIP budget. Quickly, these are just the changes since the study session. There has been two months. There's a few projects that have been added. Wanted to highlight those five. One of the comments at the study session was about Lynn Road Sound Wall. That was added as a project carryover in the capital budget. It's clearly identified in it. That money has been carried over to the last few years and is available once that development, as long as the final development's done, it will be available for doing those sound studies. And then again, theaters, major maintenance projects being funded by the general fund. Simply the changes at the study session, seventy million, there's some additions, some deletions. Ultimately, there is an increase in the CIP proposed budget tonight that is more than at the study session. There's your listing of them. CIP is based on a fifteen-year maintenance plan. Public Works has a capital improvement plan for various funds, water, wastewater, and then the five-year, or the ten-year financial strategic plan. You know, in both operating and capital, your council priorities are where we're providing funding to get those goals accomplished for the next year. This just shows you budget and projects. The bars are the amount of funding that has been allocated over the years. The red line is the amount or numbers of projects. Nine-ten, ten-eleven, the largest bar is when we had significant federal support out there in stimulus funding, and that's why there was the jump. Not all that money became available, but that was what we had budgeted for, and so that's why the large increase. But in oh-seven, oh-nine, we had built up some reserves, projects, funding went up. Projects declined and have declined the last two-year cycle and are declining again, and funding has declined as well. Here's your summary, overall, seventy-three million dollars in the first year. I'm sorry. Yeah, seventy-three million is the total budget. And here are the categories, streets at twenty-four million is your largest expenditure. Here's the breakout in a graph, streets at twenty-seven. Proposed CIP budget in the second year is twenty-seven point two million. Okay, highlights, these are just projects that we want to highlight. I'll move to the next slide. Facility project highlights, we highlight the theater projects in the top part. Water and wastewater project highlights. Multiple funding sources, general fund, gas tax, federal and state grants, developer fees, enterprise funds, redevelopment funds, and other miscellaneous funds. Here's what I did in the first few graphs that shows you the various categories, streets, facilities. Here, I'm showing you where they're being funded from. A good example is gas tax is restricted to mostly streets, and so even though I'm showing you twelve-point-one million in gas tax, that is for street and other public works-related projects. Redevelopment agency, five-point-two, just showing you where the different funding for capital projects is being proposed. And again, the second one, twenty-seven point two. This graph really shows you the general fund. In the first few years, fiscal year two thousand eight, two thousand nine, we had significant projects identified to be funded from the general fund. Some of those projects were delayed and are currently in a holding account, but you can see that the funding from the general fund related to capital projects has significantly declined, and that is based on the environment that we're in and being very cautious on how we're providing funding for capital projects for the general fund. Challenges. We talked about these at the study session. Here's the list again. Again, I provide some detail here. Certainly available for questions, should council have any. Okay, proactive approach. You know, maybe I'll read this slide in depth. City council, I just, we have had a proactive approach. We haven't, you know, I like to call this a big ship. I mean, things have changed. We have steered the right course. We couldn't turn this thing around quick in that aspect, and so we have been taking a proactive approach, looking at different ways of getting us from declines in revenues that happened, started happening three years ago to where we are now. So, we have taken a proactive approach. City council, finance audit committee, executive team provided various options, and we've been following a plan to get us back to a structurally balanced general fund budget. We will continue to monitor revenues and to provide council updates and to adjust as that information comes in. Fiscal policies, one of the recommendations tonight is to adopt fiscal policies, very critical in the financial management of this organization. We list the fiscal policies that are in the capital or in the operating book. These policies are in the book every year that you adopt the budget. Here's the list of those fiscal policies. One of the ones I want to highlight is a new requirement from the GASB, which is the Government Accounting Standards Board, fifty-four. This is their fourth, fifty-fourth rule, talks about the new fund balance, and the financial presentation of how we do our CAFR will change a little. Will go from reserved and unreserved fund balance into non-spendable, restricted, committed, assigned, unassigned fund balance components. The policy, the new policy, or the revision to the fund balance policy is in the Mac, is in the budget book. Should you have questions, we can provide answers. That policy was presented to the Audit Finance Committee. Part of the Audit Finance Committee is meeting with our external auditors. The auditors provide us new pronouncements that need to be implemented from a financial reporting. The auditors made the presentation to the Finance Audit Committee. Staff then presented a revised policy to the committee with the new conditions based on the GASB requirement, and so that's effective June thirtieth, two thousand and eleven. So when I'm in front of you in January, I'll give you a brief overview of that policy and how it actually impacts our financial reports. So staff's recommendation, adopt the resolution for the annual CIP, operating and CIP budgets, adopt resolution for the RDA, and to approve fiscal policies of the city. And finally, acknowledgements, go back to acknowledgements. Well, Finance Audit Committee, Capital Facilities Committee, departments, it's just not finance. It's every department in the city. A lot of the department heads are here and their staff, a lot of staff from Public Works. They do have one of our largest budgets and spend, I would like to say thousands of staff hours preparing their both, their operating and capital budget, but it is a major work effort, not just for the finance department, but for all departments. And then city council discussion.
Questions from the council? Mr. Minnie, do you have anything to add?
Not at this time, thank you.
Questions from Mr. Adams? Mr. Adams, very thorough.
Thank you, sir.
I know you went through a number of slides and fairly, very quickly, but I think you covered the key points, as I think you pointed out, council's not receiving this budget for the very first time. We've actually dealt with virtually every aspect of this, and you just highlighted some of the relatively minor changes from our study session, so.
It's true, sir. You know, it starts in February and starts at the goal setting. We do a presentation there, and we've made several presentations to the council, so this is not the first time you've seen it. We try to provide a high-level summary and open for questions.
It also makes it digestible for the council, so that's, I think your approaches, the city's approach has been very good over the years. Questions? Ms. Bill O'Opina.
Thank you. Very thorough presentation, I do appreciate it, thank you. And I know that staff worked very hard on this, and it's not easy to try to balance the budget. I do have a couple of questions for clarification, namely on page ten, slide number nineteen Actually, it's number twenty. I looked at your pie chart as well, which is, where was it? Earlier in the presentation, and I saw a decrease, you mentioned a decrease in salary and benefits. A slight decrease for salary and benefits due to the elimination of several staff positions, you said.
I'm looking at, yeah, and there is a slight over, well, I shouldn't say, let me step back. Overall, if you look at slide, I'm sorry, overall, if you look at slides sixteen and slide seventeen, overall salary and benefits throughout the city are going from forty-seven point five-five-nine million up to forty-seven point eight-five-two million. Overall, there is, you know, it's, it's about two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar increase, no, it's about three-hundred-thousand citywide on forty-seven million. Overall, salary and benefits is increasing that amount citywide, and that's not related to salaries, it's related to some of the, you know, benefits and stuff, I mean, some of the other benefits.
Okay.
But with that said, with that said, there are other places that have shown declines, you know, if you go back a couple of years, specifically the library. And if I had said that, that there's a decline in the second year in salary and benefits, I'd have spoke.
Well, actually, your chart did show the three percent increase in salary and benefits, the pie chart, and then the other chart showed a decrease in salary and benefits, and you know, what I didn't, had a post-it note. And it showed a slight decrease, and you did mention a slight decrease, and I was wondering how you could reconcile the two. Let me try to find it.
And there's always lots of numbers, so I could have easily made an error.
I should have marked it, but the pie chart that I was talking about earlier is numbers thirty-one and thirty-two, and do I understand that there's a decrease in the overall budget of eighteen million dollars for twelve-thirteen?
Okay.
When we categorize it by category?
Let me ask this, when you're looking at page thirty-seven, or I mean, I'm sorry, thirty-one and thirty-two, the pie graphs, correct? Salary and benefits, forty-four percent, forty-three percent? Okay.
Yes.
That, that, those pie charts represent the general fund, and so the forty-four percent compared to, hold on, oh. Yeah, let me, let's see this way to explain this. I think I know the answer, or I think I understand your question now. In eleven-twelve, which is the graph on page thirty-one, salary and benefits is at forty-four percent, and then on the pie graph on forty, or thirty-two says forty-three percent. So your question is, will salary and benefits have decreased one percent? No, they haven't. Their percentage of the total operating expenditures for the general fund have changed in relation to total expenditures, and the reason why is because police costs increased. And so in the first year, they represent thirty-nine percent of the total expenditures. In the second year, they represent forty-one percent of the total expenditures. And so that when you turn to slide thirty-three, you can see that salary and benefits in eleven-twelve go from twenty-eight point four to twenty-eight point six in the first and second year, which is only a two-hundred-thousand-dollar increase. But police contract go from twenty-five point three up to twenty-six point six, which is a one-point-three-million-dollar increase, and so police costs represent a larger percentage of total expenditures. Hopefully, that answers the question?
Yes, it does to some extent. I now have all my papers mixed up, so that's my own fault, but anyhow. Okay, for your recommendations or challenges, at the very end, you say that some long-term strategies need to be put in place, and that some short-term gap measures have been exhausted, basically. What would those long-term solutions be?
Well, I think if I was gonna, I think we had a, hopefully I had a comment in here. You know, you saw our forecast as far as revenue growth, and especially in this year, we're only anticipating very minor growth in eleven-twelve compared to ten-eleven, ten-eleven, eleven, yeah, eleven-twelve. Problem is, is that we don't see the revenues growing at the same rates that we have in the past, and so expenditures haven't necessarily changed in their growth, but their growth is higher than revenue growth. And so, long-term, the question is, how are we going to address that when we, when we have revenues that seem to have leveled off, and we're going to have slight growth in revenues, no question. I mean, at some point, those, but they're not going to return to, you know, past years where we had seven percent growth in sales tax. That's not going to happen. And so those long-term strategies is, how do we balance our expenditures with the long-term growth? Do I have recommendations at this point? Not really. I think what we want to point out is, is that to balance this budget, we did eliminate short-term gap closing measures, and I listed those, sports endowment, not funding general liability fund, our internal service fund is at the levels that we have in the past. Those are being returned, and this budget, we're going to have to deal with that as we go into our next two-year cycle. One of the things I did mention is, is we will update our financial strategic plan based on this adoption of the budget, and we'll make that presentation to you in fall, and we can talk about some long-term strategies based on that revised forecast.
Yes, because I'm looking at the challenges, and we knew that those challenges were coming. That's not, that's not a surprise, but I'm just wondering how we could face those future challenges and how long we will be able to continue to balance the budget. So with this, I will bring up another issue that I brought up at the last council meeting when we talked about the budget. Is it really a good time right now to restore some of these, some of the funding, such as the sports endowment fund or even the open space fund? I know that there are two categories that I think are a little bit more pressing, that do require more immediate funding, but I'm wondering whether this is really a good time to restore the funding to those two items that I mentioned.
Right, as I, as I'd mentioned, at least in the presentation, or at least highlighted in the slide, on open spaces, if we actually do have an operating, a positive operating result next year, money will be transferred up to the hundred thousand into the open space fund. That's the more or less of the calculation. For the sports endowment, there are three endowments, as you're aware. Sports endowment was one of the short-term gap strategies that was implemented. It did impact that group of people and for two years, and we went back into this budget with the point of, those short-term gap strategies got us through this ability to relook at our workforce and to make reductions in staffing, and we've done that. And so we, we have reduced our expenditures based on the salary and benefits, and we've been able to restore those short-term gap strategies. And so staff's recommendation is, you know, there is these endowments that were set aside by prior councils, both for sports, community, and social services, and the sports endowment was one that was recommended to be postponed for two years. We did that. We have readjusted our expenditures, and now it's back included in the budget as staff's recommendation.
No, I understand. I'm not advocating for any elimination. I'm just wondering whether, knowing that we will have future challenges, whether we need to look at perhaps putting those on hold for one more year or so.
We're okay for this two-year budget, and as we go into the next cycle, everything is always on the table when we start the budget process, and based on how revenues have performed and projections on expenditures, we can have that discussion with city council when we go into the next two-year cycle. Mr. Minnick wants to make a comment.
If I can interject, if it's the council goal here, because the budget is structurally balanced now, and if the council's goal is to not fully fund the endowment or fund the open space fund, or even in other areas, and you want to add to reserves or build balances, that is your prerogative. But we stand behind the recommendations and it's gone through a number of committees and it is a prudent plan. And also, I want to point out that we've been working very cooperatively and closely with the employee groups and the budget action group that had a number of city employees to get to this point. So it is your prerogative, though, if you want to set aside funds, but you don't need to do that in order for the budget to remain structurally balanced for the next two years.
Thank you for the explanation. I, I do appreciate that the budget is structurally balanced. I'm just looking at the summary of challenges, state budgets, retirement costs, water rates, that's going to be another big issue, street funding and citywide staffing. And so I'm looking more, I'm coming from a perspective of looking at a list of priorities, what is more important. It seems to me that perhaps sports is not a huge priority, but it is, as you said, the prerogative of the city council. I think there are other areas in the city where we can make a huge difference. I do appreciate sports, but it's not a top priority when we have other pressing issues. That's just this council member's opinion. Let's see. I think, I think that was it. You did say that you are eliminating all of these extraneous positions and they're gone from?
Yes, I'm not sure if we highlighted. In the staff report, we certainly have a lot of attachments. We even have some comments based on questions at the study session. Mayor Fox has brought up before, he brought up at the study session. And in the draft budget that we prepared, it does not show unfunded positions at this point. It shows funded positions only. So that's the, right? Hopefully answered your question.
Yes. And then the chart for the theaters looks very, very optimistic.
Well, I, I think that's one way of looking at it. I think that the arts report, the, the, certainly the need, the understanding from the city council that we need, that this is a huge investment, this facility, arts are a major critical element of this community, that increasing some expenditures for marketing, promoting, you know, the programming aspect is putting money in, from reserves into trying to increase, return the attendance and performance numbers to where they were prior to the economic downturn. And so, you know, those projections are 10 and 15% reduces every year. But if you look at how much that change has been over the last few years, it'd be hard for me to say we need to spend more money and we don't have a plan or any goals to return the theater to what we believe it should be. So with that said, there's additional expenditures, additional budget for marketing, advertising, promoting. We have to have some five-year plan to increase performance and attendance. So our projections are showing that. Just like, just like the general fund, you know, when we give you an update in six months, we'll, we'll provide you an update on the theater. And as we go through the next couple of years, we'll communicate that to council as well.
Okay. What would be Plan B if those projections are not going to be coming to fruition?
Well, Plan B, you know, it's always easy to say that the general fund should, you know, subsidize or support the theaters. As you mentioned, we do have a structurally balanced budget. We've made reductions, priorities, setting priorities. You know, to have the general fund support the theaters beyond the capital projects, because that's one-time money that we're paying out of general fund reserves. If you're going to support the theaters from the general fund operating revenues, we need to make reductions in other areas. And so Plan B, and hopefully we don't get to that point, is, okay, we're going to have to provide general fund support. What areas do, I mean, we're going to have to live within our operating revenues and the general fund. Question is, where does the theaters fall in the priorities of everything else? Police, library? And so that, you know, I'm not saying that's Plan B, but if general fund support comes from an operating side, we're going to have to make decisions on where does that fit within our priority lists? And I know it's, you know, theaters and the arts are important, but how does that relate to the other expenditures occurring out of the general fund?
All right, that would be it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Dr. Clancy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Actually, what I have is mostly a comment. John, I thank you guys. You and the staff did a great job. I know you really worked quite hard and diligently to get to where we are. And as we've said several times, it is structurally balanced. We have a budget that's structurally balanced and I think that's a major accomplishment. Also, as you point out in challenges, what comes to my mind when I hear that is a concern I've had with infrastructure and how you pay for the repair and maintenance thereof. And on your slide 72, you list funding, much of what goes to infrastructure. And you've got general fund, which may be the only real light at the end of the tunnel if it ever grows. And you look at the rest of them and those are certainly at risk or in decline. So I think it points out the need for us to certainly mind our expenses, but also be concerned with our revenues and our sales tax, which points out the need for our concern and our cognizance of the benefits of a healthy business community. We can't just turn our backs on that because we're really counting on them. We can only cut so much or we can get certainly very bare bones. But again, I really salute you for the job you've done and I congratulate you and the staff. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Minnick, just a comment. I note in the council mail that we got our periodic report from the office of the district attorney on the community prosecutor program. And I know that it's germane to the budget because we're funding that at somewhere north of $100,000 a year, right?
$115,000.
Okay. Lot of good things in the report. I know there's some cities that have chosen because of difficult financial times to reevaluate that program. I think in future reports, it may be helpful for the council to see data as it's reflected in felony prosecutions, felony arrests. I realize that numbers don't tell the whole story and I think the report outlines that this position is a good resource for our detectives. But I think at some point in time, there needs to be some data comparison from when we didn't have the program some five, six years ago. I'm not quite sure when that was, about that time, versus today. And then it may be helpful to have the police chief also here when we get that report back to provide some professional insight into that and maybe even the community prosecutor himself. So if there's no objection as it relates, not necessarily to the budget, but since that's the agenda item, I'd like some, an update on that item and then, you know, obviously you're recommending we continue the position, but I think we need to look at that in the context of, are we, you know, the data that supports the position. Mr. Minnick.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, a good question, it's good timing too, because we were, we're looking at coming back to you, assuming you approve that as part of the budget. In the next couple of meetings, we'll come back with the agreement with the district attorney for this program. So we could put that, those stipulations in there. But we'll call the district attorney's office and work this out ahead of time and then make it part of the agreement if we can do that.
Again, I want to emphasize, it's a good report. The community had an opportunity to read it. It outlines criminal investigations and complaint reviews, community outreach, multidisciplinary interview center, liaisons with the school district. So certainly there's a lot of work being done. We've just had the program now for, I think, a sufficient period of time that we should be able to measure, at least one measurement should be felony arrests, felony convictions, or even a decline in crime because of the realization that if you commit a crime at Thousand Oaks, we're likely going to prosecute you and it'll stick, so to speak. So I think that's where Chief Matson would come in handy as well to provide that, that insight for us. So that would just be my one comment on that. Any other questions? All right, we have no speaker cards on the budget. Dr. Clancy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think it's with pleasure that I recommend staff recommendation.
All right, Dr. Clancy, Ms. Irwin.
Yeah, I, I am, I'm talking about an item that is in the CIP budget and that is the KCLU grant. And I think KCLU does do an outstanding job and Mary Olson is awesome. But we have a budget that's cutting library services, cutting public safety. We're not giving our employees a raise this time and I don't think the timing is right for me to support this. I know it's symbolic because this isn't general fund money, but nonetheless, right now I can't support anything that's not a core city service right now. So I'm going to ask for a separate vote on that.
Okay, we'll call that out special. Any other requests on the budget? Ms. Bill O'Pina.
Yes, I will definitely support the budget and would also then like to separate out the sports endowment for that matter. If we are already separating out items, maybe we can add this one.
Okay.
Thanks.
So we'll call out the KCLU grant. Sports endowment. Any others? Are you hearing none? Dr. Clancy, do you want to move?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Move the majority of the staff recommendation with the KCLU grant and the sports endowment pulled out.
All right. Let me ask the parliamentarian, which is Ms. Abano. She's our expert. Okay. Would it be okay if we just called out the KCLU item and the sports endowment? Is no votes for Ms. Irwin and Ms. Bill O'Pina? And then let them vote on the budget?
Yes, we can do that or you can do separate votes.
We don't need to do that. All right. So, Madam Clerk, we just want the record to reflect Ms. Bill O'Pina is a no vote on the sports endowment and Ms. Irwin is a no vote on the KCLU grant. That makes it easy. So now with those items put in, any further discussion on the budget as a whole? I just, again, for the whole city staff, on behalf of the council, really the community, we do a, a very good job over the course of the year managing and reviewing the budget. So when it comes to the middle of June, it's a fairly straightforward process. I want to thank the department heads. I want to thank the employee groups, virtually everybody that is and the community for their support in sometimes some reduced services and certainly the employees for doing their fair share in what has been some very, very difficult times. And it is certainly our hope, as it's reflected in the budget, that the next fiscal year shows a, about a 3%, 2% increase in sales tax. So while that's not going to be reflective of one times are very good, certainly is an aspect that we need to look at, that we are at least getting a flattening out, if you will, of the sales tax. So we, we thank the staff for the good job that you do.
Thank you, sir.
Ms. Bill O'Pina.
I just wanted to point out that it helps to have a budget officer, Mr. Cicada, and the fact that you were a recommendation from our budget task force, I think shows that citizen input is vital. And I'm glad that that recommendation resulted in your appointment. And it shows in the preparation of tonight's report that all of you really have done a wonderful job. Thank you.
I do the easy part. I just present it. He does all the hard work. So thank you.
All right. Vote, please.
The motion carries 5-0.
All right, that was approved. That concludes our public hearings. We'll move to items 10, 11, and 12. We have no reports. Item 13, the city manager's report. Mr. Minnick.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, by way of the state budget update, I just got some information from our legislative affairs manager, Mina Labor, who's up in Sacramento. Tomorrow's a critical day, June 15th. The state legislature needs to move on the budget or the legislators will, or they won't get paid. So there's some wild proposals up there. It's very partisan. Now they're talking about more redevelopment takeaways. So I won't go into all the details. I have a lengthy set of bullet points from Mina, but it's wait and see. We'll, we'll see what the world looks like tomorrow. But we can, those of us in local government can fully expect the state to try to take more away from us to balance their budget. And I always remind you, it's just a pity that we don't have any governments below us, so we can go steal from them. But that's the reality that we're dealing with. A follow-up from requests from the public. We heard a speaker on the Lynn Road wall issue. I also want to share with council, we do have good news from Sacramento, from our legislative affairs manager, Mina Labor. The speed limit legislation that she's been working on in your behalf for several years, she had success in a senate committee. And it looks like we're moving in the direction of being able to lower speed limits by five miles an hour. We don't want to get too optimistic because it's not totally gone through. That would help on Lynn Road, the walls that you saw earlier tonight. So that's one thing. Also, we are working, staff reminded me, with county code enforcement, to get the county, they have limited staff in this area, but to get them to work more aggressively with the Lynn Road HOA and property owners in this area. And the bike lane improvements that are coming up for Lynn Road, once those go through, that will put a hard curb and some other things that will make it harder for the cars to run into the wall, if you will. So we'll do an update for you. Staff has already talked to the speaker and we'll bring her in the fold on that one. In the next council meeting, we have a joint meeting in these chambers a week from tonight with the planning commission, study session only with all 10 of you to go over the draft Thousand Oaks Boulevard specific plan EIR. The next council meeting after that will be on June 28th. And at this point in time, we're looking at a few hearings, one dealing with the annual housing in lieu and non-residential development linkage fee adjustments. Remember, because of the economy, we've frozen those, so we'll come back with a one-year report. Urban water management plan, public hearing. And then we have the landscape and lighting district assessments. We also have a department report worth pointing out, the Ed Lawrence photo collection. We've been working on this at council direction for about 15 years, maybe longer. We think we have a tentative agreement to come back to you with, so we're excited about that. Okay, that's it. By way of city manager follow-up, thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Minnick. All right, our closed session, we finished that. And so we have no public notices and that brings us to the adjournment. We will adjourn to our special meeting on June 21st, 2011. I believe that is the first day of summer. And so I'm just notifying the council that we will move to our summer attire beginning June 21st and that will go through the September, through the September meetings. So with that, we will adjourn to June 21st, 2011. Have a great week.